So Darlena?
Yes, sir.
This is not Zoom, right, tonight?
No, it is a Zoom, but we can't Zoom from in here.
So will I be able to speak tonight?
You will be able to speak.
Okay.
And they can hear you through the council audio.
Does that mean this microphone or this?
Yes. From what I understand.
Usually, I always had that the red means off.
We were off, and I don't know what happened last week. And yes, the red is off. Your button on your desk?
So that? Push the button, right?
Yes.
If I want to speak?
How are you, sir?
Well, very good.
How's it going?
It's gonna be a lot better. That's the interesting thing here, isn't it? You're the governor's taking this to a higher renegation, which would be 10 only.
Oh, it is? Yeah, I hadn't heard that.
I was setting up a funeral and meeting this at 25:00, and then I got a text. That hour ago, and oh, sorry, now we're down to 10.
Yeah, I'll have to check that. The November 17, 2020 meeting of the city councils, the city of Springfield has called order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If clerk would please take the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. And Alderman Redpath did notify us that he would not be here, so it's excused absence. We'll go through the zoning agenda first. The first item on the agenda is document number 2020-042 for the property located at 49 Fairview Lane. Petitioners are Kiri and Lisa Mieschka as leaseholders. Present zoning classification is R1, single-family residence, District 155.016. Requested zoning relief, a variance of Section 9 for docks of Appendix A of the Lake Land Use Plan for the Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to allow the dock structures to a maximum of 57 feet from the shoreline at normal pool, full pool elevation instead of the 35 maximum feet allowed. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval, limited to one dock structure that contains a maximum of two boat slips. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we accept the planning and zoning recommendations for approval.
Been moved by Alderman Hanauer to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval and seconded in discussion. All those in favor, the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio. Alderwoman DeSensio. Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Eight ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is document number 2020-043 for the property located at 2805 West White Oaks Drive. Petitioner is Adam Colrus. Present zoning classification is S2, community shopping and office district, Section 155.031. Requested zoning relief, a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.031(c)(3), conditional permitted uses in the S2 community shopping and office district and 155.200 taverns and a variance of 155.200a2 taverns to allow a tavern with liquor sales by the drink on a zoning lot which is located within 100 feet from the nearest lot on which there is a residence, church, school, park, community facility, or daycare, and a variance of 155.480i1 landscape screening and lighting regulations, transitional buffer yard and landscaping requirement to reduce the required transitional buffer yard from 12 and 1/2 feet to 0 feet along the west property line to allow a patio area as per the attached site plan. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval of the requested conditional permitted use of a tavern with the following conditions. Number one, the tavern is limited to approximately 1,147 square feet total with no more than approximately 457 square feet of the outside space as indicated on the site plan submitted with the petition. Number two, no amplified entertainment. Number three, hours of operation of the tavern are limited to 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. And number four, a solid fence in compliance with the zoning ordinance shall be constructed and maintained around the outside seating area. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a recommendation, a motion that we accept the recommendation of planning and zoning staff?
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Hanauer to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Present.
Noted. Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauers.
Yes.
Eight yeses and one present, Mayor.
Thank you. The next item and final item on the agenda is document number 2020-045 for the property located at 6893 Canadian Cross Drive. Petitioner is Nancy M. Bartolomichi as lake leaseholder. Present zoning classification is R1, single-family residence, District 155.016. Requested zoning relief, a variance of Section 9 docks of Appendix A of the Lake Land Use Plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to allow a dock structure to a maximum of 56 feet from the shoreline at normal full pool elevation instead of the maximum 35 feet allowed. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval of the petition as submitted. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion, we accept the regional planning and zoning recommendation staff for approval.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Hanauer to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation for approval and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. And that concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. This time, the chair recognizes Treasurer Busher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The beginning balance of the corporate fund in the month of October had $12,936,814. We took in total receipts of $14,924,318. Corporate fund in the month of October had total disbursements of $10,336,546, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance of $17,524,586. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
So moved.
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. This time, I'd like to recognize Chief Fallon-Ryney. He's gonna give an update on the COVID situation right now, and I don't know if he wants to go into the Tier 3 that the governor just announced. Later this afternoon and also had some other items.
He doesn't, because he hasn't read that yet.
Okay.
I, you know, it's funny, when, when the governor was speaking and there was one of our, I walked past the kitchen and I could hear him speaking on the, in his news conference, and I immediately started getting emails, so I knew that he had announced something that changed. But I was deep into something else, so I didn't really get a chance to watch it and/or analyze it. Based on the emails, it sounds like there's a 25% capacity coming, just based on the questions that I've already gotten from a few retail outlets and a couple of the churches. So of course, the fire department will work with people to determine what their capacity is. But really, if you, if you're a church, or if you're a retail store and you're spacing people out the way you're supposed to anyway, you're probably darn close to that 25% capacity. So if you don't know, do what you've been doing. But obviously, we need to put a hard number to that, so you can have people counting at the doors and making sure that you don't go over that capacity. But just realize that, you know, today's Tuesday, so we should be able to get people answers by, especially for church services by the end of the week. Most churches, to my knowledge, should have a, a sign similar to one that's on this room that just outlines what the fire load capacity is. So yeah, thanks, Mayor, for letting me speak today. This is my second day back to work post-COVID. By all the metrics, I could have come back probably last Thursday, but I didn't want anybody to be uncomfortable around me and certainly understand why people would be. You know, this is, this is a virus that, it's amazing when I hear the stories and just talking to some of the firefighters that have gotten it that just have absolutely no idea where. And, you know, they'll, they'll have a wife that's positive and nobody else in the house that's positive. They'll have themselves that'll be positive and nobody else has gotten it and nobody else on their crew. It's, it really is, it really is hard to explain to people, but we know how we can keep from getting it, and that's, that's important. I can tell you, me personally, it was a, it's a rough week, and I say that knowing full well that many people didn't survive this and many people, you know, have lost loved ones along the way. So I'm not asking for any sympathy, but I'm telling you, if you haven't had this stuff, you don't want it. As far as the SFD, we're getting back to normal status. We do have still 19 on our, on our positive list, but they're dropping off of that and returning to work pretty rapidly. They've been pretty good about, well, they've been really good about keeping their distance in the firehouse. And if you guys have heard me talk about it on the news or on the radio, you know, that, that is a challenge in Springfield. We've got some pretty tight stations. We're doing our best to work with those crews. They're rotating, you know, some of the multi-company houses are rotating meals and doing things to, to keep their distance, because you can see, you know, you can see, it doesn't take a, doesn't take a, it doesn't take a contact tracer to see how sometimes it was able to spread through, through the firehouse. So our members have done, you know, we did great. We kept it out of the firehouse until September 2nd was our first case. That was case number one. There was not a fire department anywhere near our size that can claim that. And, but, once that, once that drip broke open, it was the dam burst. And we had, we had a rough couple of weeks, and we're getting over it, we're getting through it. Everything's back open, everything is back in service, all the apparatus, the two apparatus that were closed for about 48 hours are back in service, back up and running, fully staffed. You know, I heard a lot of rumors about the party, and I really wasn't in a position to, to get any ground truth or to get any, any facts, because I was going through, trying to recover myself. Ultimately, that party revealed no positive cases, though, and that's important for people to know, that there was a guest there that ultimately did have, and it was a non-SFD guest, that ultimately did have COVID, but nobody. Everybody that was tested, wives, kids, and the firefighters that were there, all tested negative, they're all back on the job. So, you know, it, it seemed like once that, once that come out of the gate, it was hard to, it was hard to control the narrative that was going around that particular event, but it was a very innocent event. We are working with, we're working with UIS, the mayor and the chancellor at UIS, they're kind of fun to watch on a conference call together. And they, they're, it's funny, because you can tell it's a high priority for each of them, and it should be, but we're trying to work together and come up with, with a maintenance test for the fire department, that we can just get our members tested every Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. That's, that's not written in stone yet. That's kind of my vision, and that that test would be available. It's a quick, it's a saliva test. The Champagne Fire Department is doing that. They're, they're all so lucky that they have a university right in their backyard, and they are doing that, and it is proving, it's proving to pay dividends well, because they're able to catch those cases. We've had probably five people that are positive that have never had a symptom. They feel fine, they've never, but for the fact that they happened to work with somebody who was positive and they were placed in quarantine, they would be walking around right now, you know, hopefully wearing their mask, but there's always that risk of them shedding it. And that is, that's what we can do, if we can test people more often. Obviously, we're gonna find some people that are positive that, that had no idea, but that's good, because the worst-case scenario, you know, I was very lucky, I started getting symptoms very quickly and immediately removed myself from my family and my workplace. So I felt like after the onset of symptoms, I was no longer a danger to anyone. And, but if I'd have been walking around for five or six more days not knowing, who knows what that would have looked like? So kudos to the mayor and to the chancellor at UIS. We look forward to the conference call we're gonna have with them tomorrow, and I think that is going to be the key to success for the fire department and to limit the spread. Another avenue that we have, and we're working the process now, it's a little bit of a bureaucratic nightmare, but we've gotten, we've received 600 rapid tests from Sangamon County Department of Public Health. This is not something that they were sitting on, the minute they got them, they sent some over to, to us, they've been in discussions with PD. And this is the 15-minute Abbott test that we've been reading about, and it almost looks like a pregnancy test. You do the swab, you stick in the thing, you drop some fluid on there, you wait 15 minutes, and you have a pretty good, well, you know whether or not you're positive or negative. And that, that we're looking at is kind of a backup to that surveillance testing that we're wanting to do through UIS. So does anybody have any questions on anything that I've said so far?
Nope.
All right. So the other thing I wanted to talk about, and I spoke to the mayor earlier this week, I am going to retire at the end of this month. I have discussed it with my family, and we feel like it's the right move, and the time is right, and I've got some other options that I'm going to explore, but I want to thank you guys for supporting the fire department. All 10 of you have done so. I don't think I've ever brought anything up here that you guys haven't supported. I'll have more to say about that in the coming, in the coming weeks, but I didn't want you to read about it in the media. I told the fire department staff already, and I told the firefighters, obviously, and discussed it with the mayor, so I know that it's gonna get out sooner or later. So if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So any questions for the chief? Alderman McMiniman?
Another question, just a comment, you know, continuity in service and longevity is real important towards achieving goals and quality performance. So thank you for five years of continuous service. In the past, we've had revolving doors in the fire department, and it's a real plus to see chiefs stay in place to make sure new plans and policies get executed and carried out. So thank you for that five years of continuous service, chief.
Little less than that, but I appreciate that. Thank you, Alderman.
Yeah, if you'd like to speak that, to that, too, you succeeded Chief Helmrichson. If you could speak to, you know, you inherited what he had done, but you kept it going and you improved the department. And if you'd like to speak briefly upon the structure in place for the succession planning, I think that'd be helpful.
Well, the one thing about-
Especially since it's your last, technically, the last city council meeting, correct?
I'm not moving other town.
The committee as a whole.
I, you know, I didn't prepare anything, but the fire service, the police service, the military, as you well know, that is what we do, that's what we're good at, is, you know, there's no, everybody says knowledge is power. The one thing that, that we don't do as a staff is, is keep ideas from each other. We don't, there, there's no, there's nothing that I know that the rest of the staff doesn't, that there's no reason to, to manage that way. It is a, because it is somewhat of a revolving door, just by the nature of how, how we promote, and we, we have that, you know, there's, I always joke about my son, my sons, I get notified on most working fires and definitely second alarm fires, I'll usually go, but I make coffee first, because I'm not gonna command a fire out. You know, they're, they are doing their thing, I just get there to support their mission, and that's the way I've looked at the entire fire department, is just supporting the mission of the people in Division 2 that are, you know, work so hard to keep fires from happening in the first place. Heather over in training, Jeff in Division 1, and I just, that's, that's the way I looked at it. And hopefully, and I'm confident, that the next person will do the exact same thing.
Yeah, we appreciate your service, and been here 25 years, is that right?
Little less than that. I've been in the fire service a long time. I've been in the fire service 31 years.
Very good.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your service, and I'm sure we'll be getting an update next week at the committee as a whole, too. But your last day, I believe you said, was December 1st?
11:30.
11:30, end of the month. Well, thank you. Moving on to greener pastures, right, chief? Well, thank you again. Next, Hanson wanted to give a presentation on the ordinance, so if I could have a motion to pull ordinance 2020-455 out of order, please?
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is that it? Thank you. So it's 420-455, and I'd ask Jim Mole to come up. I read this, if you would, please. An ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with Sangamon County and Sangamon Mass Transit District regarding a Springfield-Sangamon Mass Transit District, regarding the Springfield-Sangamon County Transportation Center. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2020-455 on final passage.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Then we'll give the presentation, and there may be some questions after that. So thank you, Jim.
Jim Mole, Hanson Professional Services, 1525 South Sixth Street, Springfield. I had sent in to Nate a figure that had some information on it that I think might help explain, I don't know if you got that or not. Okay.
She's gonna upload the presentation here shortly.
All right, I'll give everybody just a quick rundown on where we are on the overall rail project, and then talk a little bit specifically about the transportation center. I will be brief. Our usable segment 2 project, which is the Laurel and Ash Street underpasses, is currently under construction. Ash is complete, Laurel is underway. We're waiting for the Norfolk Southern to move their tracks, and then we can complete the Laurel Street underpass hopefully sometime next summer. The other piece of construction that's underway right now is usable segment 4, which is the new bridges at Fifth and Sixth Streets. That work is underway. We plan to put the new bridges in place on Sixth Street, starting December the 4th. So Sixth Street will be closed for about 10 days, beginning December 4th through the 14th, and then some random evenings after that, we have to close the street to set the bridges in place. Usable segment 5 is the next piece, we'd like to get construction. We are getting close to completing all of the land acquisition, and we hope to open bids on that project, which is the Cook Street and South Grant Avenue underpasses and the stretch of the rail corridor through the old rail yard. Hope to open bids on that in April. The piece after that, usable segment 3, which is the Madison and Jefferson Street underpasses, we hope to start construction there in 2022. And the last piece, usable segment 6, which goes from north of Carpenter Street up to Ridgely, that we hope to start in 2024. And again, our goal is to have the entire project completed by 2025, and we think we're in shape to get that accomplished. I'll give you a quickie on the transportation center. It's to be located on the blocks north of the county building, north of Adams Street, between Ninth Street and 11th Street. And if we could roll the, the view up here a little bit, I can show you how that's gonna lay out. Yeah, keep going. There we go. This is the layout of the four blocks, where the county building is on the lower left. Adams Street runs east-west down the middle. The block to the upper left, which is shown in yellow, that will be a parking garage that will serve Amtrak customers, SMTD, the current county employee parking lots, and county visitors parking. The orange stripes that run up and down, those are the loading platforms for the Amtrak passengers, and the red just west of there is the new Amtrak station. To the upper right corner, where they are currently located, that's the new SMTD facility. The new SMTD bus transfer facility is gonna stay pretty much where it's at, but will be reconstructed with a driver break building and a place for people to stay dry and stay warm. And then there will be a bridge that goes across the tracks from the Amtrak station over to the SMTD facility, so you can get off a bus, walk across the tracks, and get right on a train. Conversely, you can park in the parking garage and walk directly into the Amtrak station without having to go outside. There will also be a connection built between the parking garage and the county building, so that county employees and county visitors can park in the garage and walk into the county building again without having to go outside in the rain and the cold. The next sheet shows kind of an elevation view of what this is going to look like. Again, this is preliminary and could change, but you see the county building on the right, you see the parking garage, the red checkerboard pattern on the left, and the Amtrak station with the Amtrak entrance in between. There'll be a drop-off lane constructed in front of the parking garage, where right now passenger, or visitors going to the county building have to stop on Ninth Street to get dropped off. There'll be a lane that they can pull off and get dropped off, and it will also serve for drop-off for Amtrak riders, and also a place for temporary parking for taxis and those sorts of things. So that's kind of a general idea of what it's gonna look like. The next slide shows kind of a cost division, that's kind of small.
Just a question, brief question on that. Does the main entrance to the county building then become the north side of the county building as opposed to the west side of the county building?
Yes, the county building entrance is being moved off of Ninth Street. The main entrance is moving off of Ninth Street up to the north side of the county building. So this area between the parking garage and the county building will serve both as an entrance to the county building and an entrance to the Amtrak station. And also via the bridge, access from Ninth Street across to the SMTD facility over on the 11th Street side. The next slide shows what we're looking at for a total cost for the transportation center, is $69 million is the total cost of the facility. We're looking for $25 million from the federal government through, through a build grant. We applied for one this year, we're unsuccessful, but we'll apply again next year. $25 million from the IDOT funding that was included in the recent capital bill for the project. Hopefully, about $1 million from an ITEP grant for some of the plaza work, and then $18 million for the county, primarily for the parking garage and some other facilities for the county. So a total cost of $69 million, with the bulk of it coming from federal and IDOT, and a significant contribution from the county. The next sheet I'll show you is just kind of an update on where we are on the overall Springfield Rail Improvements Project. You can see that we've got 20% of the project is underway, with about 60% still to complete. But in looking at the pie chart to the right, you can see the large green area, that's the part of the project that we have funded, where the small red area is the project, part of the project that remains to be funded. And we hope to attain that remaining funding through federal grants, primarily build grants. So, as you can see, the project is either underway or completed close to 50%. We've got a very large percentage of the project funded, and then in the lower, the bottom pie chart, that kind of shows what everybody's, the various funding partners anticipated pieces of this are. As you can see, we have a significant part that's either the Federal Railroad Administration or the Illinois Department of Transportation, with the Illinois Commerce Commission at 47 million, the county at 34 million. We've obtained about $15 million worth of land donations, primarily from the state, and about $6 million in city funds, and the bulk of those city funds have already expended as part of the usable segment four project. The city was responsible for land acquisition there, and most of that's complete. That's a real quick on where we are on the project, what we're looking at for the transportation center, and where we are on the funding. With regard to the ordinance tonight, the intergovernmental agreement, that is for the necessary land swaps that take place for the transportation center. Right now, the SMTD owns property that's going to need to be used for the county parking garage. The county owns the property where the SMTD is currently located. The facility, Adam Street will be closed. The transportation center, east of where the tracks are now and west of where the tracks are now, Adam Street will be occupied by buildings, so we will need to do some property transfers for that. So, that's what's primarily going on with the intergovernmental agreement, is a land swap among those three agencies.
The, I have a brief question, then turn it over to Alderman. Our city council members, on the unpaid, or the unfunded portion, it's around 50 million, is that the transportation centers or what other part of the rail project?
We're looking for about $50 million, about $25 million necessary for usable segment three in the transportation center, another $25 million for usable segment six, which is the final piece of the project. So, we're looking for two $25 million federal grants.
Okay.
And as we all know, the project has been very successful to this point in attracting federal money, primarily because it is really a good project, and also because we've had such strong support from our Washington delegation.
No doubt about it. Any questions? Alderman McMenamin.
Does that total cost include the flyover south of Stanford?
No, it does not.
Do we have a commitment from the railroads that they will reassign their tracks without the flyover?
Yes.
Good. Is that in writing, or how do we have that established?
Alderman, they've made that very, writing it up, they've made that very clear to us.
Thank you.
Do any of the city council members on Zoom have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Gregory, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moll, repeat what you said about the buildings on, the properties on Adam Street, sir. I missed a little bit of that.
Sure, Adam Street, between Ninth and Eleventh Street, that's going to have to be closed when we build the transportation center. The Amtrak loading platforms will go all the way across Adam Street. We want to build that west elevation, that west entrance into the Amtrak station and the county building, across what is now Adam Street. And the east of the tracks on Adam Street, that will serve as the primary entrance to SMTD, and be served as also a pedestrian plaza there. So, the property that is currently Adam Street, portions of that will need to be transferred to the county and SMTD for the operations and maintenance of their facility. And then the city will also be getting large piece of ground from SMTD, I'm sorry, from the county, to serve the widening of the rail corridor through there. So, there's just an overall land swap going on, but with specifically regard to Adam Street, it will be closed between Ninth and Eleventh. On the west side, it will serve as access to the county building, Amtrak, and from the east side, it will serve as access to the SMTD, and from both sides, access to the bridge that goes over the tracks.
Please, Asia.
Mayor.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a little difficult to see the presentation. Thank you for the presentation, by the way. I'm sorry, it was just a little bit difficult to see the images. Would we be able to have those emailed to us, please?
Yes, we'll take care of that tomorrow.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Well, very good. We appreciate all your great work, Jim, in keeping this on track, so to speak.
Okay.
You've been a great advocate, and that's really helped move the pieces and, you know, move that along.
I've got a question.
What's that, Alderman Gregory, I think?
Johnson.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I do.
Yes, go ahead.
How are we coming along on the Fifteenth Street overpass? Is that still figured into it?
The Fifteenth Street overpass is not part of that overall cost estimate that I showed you, but it remains a very important part of the overall Springfield Rail Improvements Project, as does the new proposed underpass at South Grand at 19th Street and at Ash Street at 19th Street. Those are necessary in order to finally eliminate the worst crossings through the city of Springfield and allow us to implement our quiet zone all through the city. So, while we have not identified funding yet for that new overpass up there at Fifteenth and North Grand, it is an important part of the project and one that the city will be aggressively pursuing as soon as we can get the tracks off Third Street over onto Tenth.
And what about the underpass on North Grand and Tenth?
The underpass at North Grand and Tenth is part of what we call usable segment six, and that is included in the funding that we showed on that slide.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Fulgenzie?
No.
Alderman Turner?
Anu.
Anybody else have any other?
Sorry. So, I was muted, I apologize. I didn't have a question, but I did really want to acknowledge the work that the Rail Improvement Project Steering Committee and applicable subcommittees did with regard to the transportation center. They, we really worked hard to have a planning process that included the community and community input, so we would have a project, not just something that was a vision of the steering committee or a vision of Hanson, but it would be a real asset to the community. And also, you will see that it will also serve to spur economic development further east, which was basically the plan that we had in place from the beginning. So, I know that, you know, what you guys see tonight is just, you know, a really nice transportation center, but I could not let it go without saying that it was a true public planning process that put all this into play, and it will be, definitely be, an asset to Springfield.
Well, thank you, Alderman Turner. That is true. We did put a lot of input into this that were gathered from the public, but we're not done with that. We had hoped by now to have a public meeting where we'd be able to lay out a little more design detail on the transportation center, but the COVID situation has kind of made that difficult. We really wanted to be able to lay things out on tables and have people stand around and look at them. So, now we're evaluating how we may be able to do that virtually, to get the design out to people, so that we can start to get some additional comments as we get into the details of the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So, it's been moved in second for approval. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yes.
Nine ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. This time, the chair will entertain a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the November 3rd, 2020 regular city council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Donlin. Second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 No, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of the city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of the city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 No, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda number 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-430, 2020-067, 2020-153, 2020-207, 2020-273, 2020-314, 2020-315, 2020-330, 2020-331, 2020-332, 2020-333, 2020-346, 2020-378, 2020-379, 2020-380, 2020-404, 2020-406, 2020-438, 2020-442, and 2020-464 remain tabled during committee. Is there any action on any of those?
No action, Mr. Mayor, but just going back to the consent agenda. City Council Coordinator, Tim Griffin, will you follow up next week? One of the consent agenda items was 2020-461, which was a collective bargaining agreement. We were going to get a number of participants in that collective bargaining agreement. So, City Council Coordinator, Tim Griffin, will you follow up on that and send out an email with that information? Thank you.
Any other discussion or action on any of the agenda numbers left in committee? Next item on the agenda is 2020-289, an ordinance authorizing execution of a grant agreement with Downtown Springfield Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $100,000 to provide services from March 1st, 2020, through February 28th, 2022. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2020, I'm sorry, 2020-289 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? And we do have Lisa Clement-Stott and Brian Wojcicki available if there's any questions via Zoom. Any questions or discussion? Alderman McMenamin.
Just discussion. Alderman Proctor, you did a good job holding this until we could see what our finances were like. We held this back when, I think back in April or May time period, when we didn't know what was going to happen with our city finances. They're much better now than what we thought they might be. There's more retail activity than we thought might happen. And furthermore, we received over $4 million in federal assistance so far, and we would expect more federal assistance in the next US Congress, which appears to be focused more on municipal help and city help than what we've received to this point, even though it's been helpful to this point. But back to the Downtown Springfield, Inc., I'm going to vote, I strongly support DSI. They, in many ways, perform a city-type role on a meager budget, enhancing downtown, and we're going to need, we will need lots of enhancement going forward. But I'm going to vote present. Why? Because the DSI funding is a discretionary funding, whereas the police and fire pension funding is an obligation that will never go away. So, I think it's important that if we fund discretionary obligations from our corporate fund, like this one, or like the quarter of a million we funded last month for the county Economic Development Corporation, then we should definitely fund the ordinance which our mayor presented to us last month, which would give the funding to our police and fire per the ordinance to which the city council had approved earlier. So, that's the issue. We can't, on the one hand, we should not provide funding for discretionary obligations while not funding obligations that can never go away. They're fixed, they're liabilities of the city, and we can talk more about this another time, but that's an explanation of the present vote.
Thank you. Alderman DeSensio.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Alderman McMenamin on this. I am a huge supporter of DSI. I sponsor all their events. I love going downtown. But until we know what that additional congressional funding looks like, I can't vote for this. And I've talked to Lisa Clement-Stott about this, as well as Alderman Proctor, and, you know, I just feel like we are in very uncertain times, and I cannot in good faith vote for this at this point in time. But know that I love downtown, know that I will support DSI personally however I can, and that's where I am.
Is there any other questions, or I didn't know if Lisa Clement-Stott or Brian Wojcicki would like to speak to this?
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
This is Alderman Gregory.
Yeah, Alderman Gregory, go ahead.
Yes, you know, I definitely, you know, I talked to Alderman Proctor and, you know, tossed around some questions that were concerning to me, and we had a wonderful conversation as well as with our Downtown Springfield, Inc. I definitely understand the concerns with our police and fire pension. I definitely believe that Alderman Hanauer and Alderman Turner expressed that we definitely, you know, want to make those obligation payments, but I thought, if I'm not mistaken, that we held that until February to see where we are at, and we're all in agreement that we are going to make that additional payment. Maybe I'm wrong. But I think it is important for Downtown Springfield, Inc. I know we're going to hear from Brian and Lisa here on what they plan to do with their money. I think it's important. I think the funding source, if I'm not mistaken, we were using Springfield Commission of Tourism dollars for it, which is not a direct city financial impact. So, it put me at ease a little bit with this. I know that they'll put some things in place to really help our downtown businesses. I think that's the heart of our city, and I think it's important to make sure that they're stable, and if this is a source that we can help that entity continue to drive business downtown, then I'm on board as long as we're in a, you know, financial situation that we can sustain.
Alderman Proctor? Or did you want Lisa or Brian to speak?
Yeah, just, thanks, Mayor. I just want to clarify a point that Alderman McMenamin brought up, that it does, I believe, does look like this is coming out of the corporate fund, but it's actually a pass-through. The money does come from hotel tourism dollars. I talked to Scott Doll about that. It's not taking away anything from his, you know, operations of what he needs to do to reattract tourism to the city. And this was something that was, you know, we did like a couple of years back with when we raised the hotel tax. We all thought that part of it should be used for promoting Springfield, and that's where this funding is coming from for DSI. So, it's not corporate dollars, it's, you know, hotel tax dollars, which is meant to, you know, increase tourism in the city and also attract, you know, promote the city, and that's what DSI will be doing with these dollars.
Didn't know if Lisa or Brian would like to say anything?
Hi, Mayor. Hi, everyone. Sure, I'm very happy to speak a little bit. We really appreciate your support for this ordinance. You probably recall that you passed this in your budget in February. A lot of things have changed since then, but the need for a strong downtown has not changed. We have been doing, I think, an excellent job in continuing to promote the businesses and, most importantly, give them the resources, the information that they need to make business decisions right now. From the virtual cash mobs that we've done, to the downtown bucks that have brought $1,000 into the downtown business economy for our- into the downtown business economy for our architecture walks. Of course, holiday walks have started. And then the other thing to remember is that, you know, we were part of the group that brought the Levitt Amp concerts to Springfield, but this is not a money-making endeavor for DSI. We, you know, we raised a lot of money for that to make it happen. None of it comes back to DSI. So your support for our operations really helps us do the work that you need us to do. And I think we're going to be a strong partner coming into the recovery phase. Brian, do you want to say anything? Probably not. Brian, as was mentioned, is our board president, Brian Wojcicki, and he's on the call as well.
No, Lisa, I think that sums it up. And I appreciate the city's support.
Any other discussion? Alderman McMenamin.
Just, I agree with what Alderman Proctor said before, that even though the fact sheet shows this is money coming from Fund 001, it's actually pass-through money that came from hotel motel tax. It moved into the corporate fund, and so it looks like it's coming from corporate fund. But actually, it's hotel motel tax, which when we raised that hotel motel tax to also fund Oak Ridge Cemetery, we dedicated a portion of that money for downtown projects. So based on Alderman Proctor's recollection of those facts, I'm changing my vote from a present to a yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will.
Mayor?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Real quick, Alderman Hanauer.
Oh, yep.
Well, and the one thing that concerns me on this is that we're also giving them $50,000 next year, for next year on this ordinance. And I will say that depending upon what the hotel motel budget looks like for next year, I may have to, if it's a trading wreck, I may have to, I may put in an ordinance to pull that $50,000 because if it's between Oak Ridge Cemetery and Downtown Springfield, I'm sorry, we've got to give to Oak Ridge before we give to downtown. So I just wanted to let people know that depending upon what our next year's budget is from the hotel motel tax, which I think we can all expect that to be way down, I think it's a little preliminary to give, grant them $50,000 for next year when that, you know, it's coming out of the Scott's budget and mostly from the hotel motel. So we got to, we got to start thinking about that. And if we have to cut it out of the budget, we're going to have to put in an ordinance to pull it. So I just wanted to alert people to that.
Alderwoman Turner.
You're on mute, Doris.
Sorry, yeah, sorry. I need someone to be here with me to push this button. So I've had conversations with Alderman Proctor and Lisa about this. And I know that we are in a difficult financial situation. And I know that we will not, we're not seeing a huge amount of hotel motel money coming in. But the other thing that I hear almost every time that we meet and talk about mitigation and talk about, you know, all of the things that are associated with COVID is that we have to do something to help our small businesses. That's the resounding word that I hear every week is that we have to do something to help our small businesses. And I think that this is a small thing that we can do to assist those downtown small businesses that, you know, are really kind of the lifeblood of keeping downtown viable. So that's, so while I understand the situation that we're in, that's the reason why that I would be a yes vote on this.
Great. Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Oh, yes, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, mayor. I'm just going to quickly echo Alderwoman Turner's comments. I think we get a lot more bang for our buck when we invest in DSI. They bring a lot, they bring so many resources and kind of creative thinking to marketing our downtown. And I certainly appreciate all their work. So looking forward to seeing what they do with this money and how they help us move out of this pandemic, because we know that that's the step we need to be looking at right now, is where do we take our small businesses and how do we build them and strengthen them moving forward?
So true. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy. Alderman Philginsy.
Yes.
He did a thumbs up.
Okay. Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
No.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yes.
Eight ayes and one no, mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2020-451, ordinance approving and authorizing execution of a license agreement with Spring River Hunting and Fishing Club for fishing at the gravel pit property for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number 2020-451 on final passage.
So moved.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The vote, or the clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Gregory. John. Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Present.
Noted. Alderman McMenamin.
What are we voting on? Sorry.
That's the gravel pit.
I had a screen problem on the computer. Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Eight ayes and one present, mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2020-453, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Susan Young and Carol McFarland for the purchase of real estate located at 1020 East North Grand Avenue in the amount of $33,000 and closing costs in the amount of $1,500. And for a total amount not to exceed $34,500 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2020-453 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
No.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Eight ayes and one nay, mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2020-455. Oh, no, I'm sorry, 454. An ordinance levying and assessing taxes to partially fund the statutory contribution of the police and fire pension funds. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2020-454 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
No, we need to fund our police and fire pension funds from a variety of tax sources, including allowing the statutory contribution to rise, not based on a tax rate, but based on an appropriate amount of levy. So that's the reason for the no vote. Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Eight ayes and one nay, mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is document number 2020-459, an ordinance approving the appointment of Mary E. Mitchell to the Springfield Municipal Band Commission. Chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number 2020-459 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and no nays, mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2020-460, an ordinance approving the appointment of Jason Boraski to the Springfield Mechanical Commission. Chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number 2020-460 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin. Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and no nays, mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2020-462, an ordinance amending Chapter 38 of the 1988 City Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by amending Section 38.30 pertaining to purchasing and contracts. The chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number 2020-462 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMenamin.
Directed at Alderman Hanauer or anybody, including our city corporation council. The way I understand this ordinance as written, do we have to start out with a five-year contract, no more than a five-year contract, and then it can be extended by one additional year for a total of six? Is that?
That's, Jim, go ahead. You can, Mr. Circle, you can answer it for me.
Okay, sorry. Yes, the ordinance is, provides for a maximum term of no more than five years and with no more than a one-year extension. So that would eliminate a situation where there might be multiple one-year extensions or maybe a two or three-year extension after the initial term. So it would be the initial term, no more than five years, and any extension, no more than one year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer. Alderman Hanauer.
Oh. Aye.
Nine ayes and no nays, mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2020-463, an ordinance amending an ordinance number 236-07-2020 for a property insurance policy for the City of Springfield properties for a one-year term with Troxel and Company for an additional expenditure of $300,000 FPR, a grand total not to exceed $2,600,000 for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair will entertain a motion to agenda number 2020-463 on final passage.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion?
Yeah, mayor, real quick.
Yes, Alderman Hanauer.
So is this, is this, this might be one of those contracts that the previous ordinance will address. How many times have we, have we extended this?
I believe this is the one we passed this year, and it's for coverage of the power plant, but.
Oh, this is the power plant? Okay.
Doug Brown will answer that, though.
Yeah, this is a new contract that, well, I mean, this particular ordinance is for an amendment, but we renew, I guess we up, re-up the insurance every year, but it's not, it's a new, a new contract, new agreement every year.
Okay. Thank you.
It's the one we're trying to get full coverage?
Correct.
Yeah. And this will provide that.
This will give us the funding to get full coverage, yeah.
So any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Philginsy.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and no nays, mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2020-467, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of a grant number 400-00-2433 for the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of $420,000 for funding of the local Cures and ES program and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $420,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number 2020-467 on emergency passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion?
Have we been briefed on this? Have we been briefed on this ordinance?
This is the grant that was awarded through DCEO. That's part of the $600,000 that's been put out there. So businesses, small businesses can apply for the $5,000 grant. But I believe Valiezel Director is on Zoom if she'd like to give a brief explanation of it.
Okay, it looks like Tom doesn't let me on video, so you'll just have to listen to my voice, I guess. So yes, you understand, we had the $200,000 that was, oh, he's going to let me start now. Okay, good evening, everyone. We had the $200,000 that was from our CARES Act funding. And about a month ago, we got a grant, we saw a grant come through the state where Region 3 could have up to $1.2 million if the municipalities wanted to apply for it to distribute in their communities. And so I looked at the other communities in our region and decided we were one of the largest communities. So I applied for $420,000 for this grant, for small business grants. And so they did a quick turnaround, approved it, and we decided we would include this $400,000 with the $200,000 that we have from our CARES Act. And thanks to all the support with Patrick Sousa at ISD, we were able to get a portal up and running, an application done within two weeks, and we launched it yesterday morning. Applications could be taken at 8:30 yesterday morning. at 8:30 yesterday morning. The applications will run through the 30th at 5 o'clock, so we will be able to give roughly 120 $5,000 grants to businesses across our community. Thus far, we've had 57 entries between yesterday and today. Now, that includes multiple businesses. They could apply for both grants if they chose to, so some businesses did apply for both grants. There are qualifiers upfront when you got to the landing page, and it would tell people before they went through the whole process of filling out an application whether or not they qualified for the CDBG CARES Act funds or the Cures Act funds. So we're really excited and happy to be able to help so many individuals in our community.
Question, Mr. Mayor.
It's Alderman McMenamin.
Val, this is a question which you don't have to answer right now, but please think about it and get back on this question. Some of our veterans organizations, they're kind of a blend of not-for-profit, but then they have canteens or restaurants that, for which they have to pay income tax, federal income tax, because it's unrelated to their tax-exempt purpose. Now, the, some of the veterans organizations saw the eligibility criteria, and it says, quote, "You have got to be not-for-profit to apply." So the question is, when you've got these posts that are kind of blended activities, and, for example, VFW's got over 15 employees, the American Legion on north, on Sagman, I believe has an equivalent number of employees, they're at risk. So the question, Val, is please take a look at the eligibility criteria and let me know if these organizations can apply for the $5,000 each. They really need it, and if the rules allow it, let's get it to them. Thanks a lot.
Yes, sir. And Alderman, one of the things, I've spoken to actually a couple of them thus far, and I pointed them to the BIG grant, but if you'd like, I'd be more than happy to share with you the link to application for the BIG grant, because it is also for-profit and not-for-profit, and that's also through the state.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Yes, Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Val and Mayor, you'll probably answer it. I remember before, when we was trying, when we was waiting on the business assistant, Mr. Mayor, you were trying to pack it with, I guess, a loan structure that didn't go along with HUD. So we're down at this $200,000. What did we do? Did we, did we reallocate that money that we was trying to put with that, or, I'm just trying to gain some understanding with that, because I know before we was trying to, you know, put this $200,000, or put some money together, both for the grants and for loans, and you were trying to leverage one another to really make it more, so we could give out more. So has that fallen by the wayside because it didn't meet the HUD rules? I'm happy that we got the $420,000 additional. I just, it was a question that was brought to me, so I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, the loan, we can go forward, but it has to be used with regular CDBG funds, so we'd have to do a public hearing again and use previously awarded CDBG funds, or future funds, not CARES Act funds for loans. They'd prefer that those given out in grants, but Val can speak to the grant portion of that, too.
No, that's absolutely correct, Mayor. We can use, we'll have to go through an amendment process like we did previously, and we can do that, so that's something that's still strongly under consideration.
Okay, I just asked about it. It was a question asked to me, and my final question on this topic, the application process, of course, you know, I've already heard some grumblings about, you know, some of our businesses may not have the most experience with some of the information that's on there. I haven't seen the application myself. I was interested in seeing that, just for firsthand knowledge of what's on that, and just sort of, I wanted to really go through it myself, of course, not apply, but I wanted to go through it myself, just to, just to see if a common person can fill this out, a business owner, you know?
Yeah, and Alderman, that's perfectly, you just have to go to Springfield dot IL dot US forward slash grants, and it'll take you to the landing page, and you'll see how what we set it up as is, some of the initial questions are criteria questions. So it will say, you ask a question, then it'll say, you know, proceed, or, you know, if the answer is not the correct answer, it might say you're not eligible for this, or it will tell you which grants you're eligible for, or if you're eligible for both grants, and to proceed on from there. We did send it to businesses in the community to ask them to look at it, and, you know, once, once we built it, of course, the staff went through with a fine-tooth comb, and, you know, we, we looked at multiple portals from other communities, and how everything, as we know, is online anymore. All the applications for all these grants are online, and we tried to mimic as best as we could, the easiest way possible, but if you want to call me tomorrow, please do, and we can walk through the whole thing together.
Absolutely, absolutely, because I'd just like to give, you know, some normal perspectives. A lot of times, I was just actually going through some state contract stuff with a guy, trying to help him, and, and I think somebody somewhere on a lot of these applications think they're easy, but for normal people who are just trying to run a business and learning, you know, these things can be quite complicated at times. And my final question would just be after, after this is all depleted and we've come out of this, can the city council be provided a summary of how that played out?
Absolutely. I'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Alderman, if anyone is having specific trouble, I mean, we were inundated with calls both yesterday and today, and staff is completely trained on how to help someone with the process, so please have them call 789-2377, and we'll be more than happy to help them.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussions? Is that Alderman Filginsy?
No, Hanauer.
Hanauer. Go ahead.
Real quick, it's my, if they've gotten, if a business has gotten a grant prior to this, they're not eligible? Is that, is that the deal, Val, or what's, what's the minimum? I mean, what, what makes them ineligible? Because some of the people that have gotten grants in the past, they're shut down now again, and, you know, I mean, $5,000 isn't a lot of money for them, but it's something, you know?
Right. No, Alderman, if they have received the BIG grant, which is the most recent grant that the state has given, they are ineligible. However, we know that there were a lot of grants that were given out early, and if there is still need, and they can show us that there is still need, no matter whether they've gotten grants prior, we just have to make sure that we're not duplicating payment on a specific item. So, no, I would encourage everyone to look through it and to apply.
Okay, thank you.
So, Val?
Alderwoman Turner.
I have just a couple of questions. I want to circle back to Alderman Gregory's question about the funding that we had previously allocated for one-time grants to businesses. So, so is that, help me understand, is that pool of money still just sitting, or can it be combined with this funding so that it allows us to have an extra amount of money available here, or what are we doing with that money?
Correct. Some people may not qualify in one area, but might qualify in another, so if they're a low demand, you know, income, which a lot of the restaurants indeed are, they can apply for CDBG, and that would be perfect, but some restaurants are finding they could apply and want to make sure that they're eligible, so they are applying for both, both grants.
Okay, so that, so that grant, that grant program is still viable?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
So, so at this point, I've got $600,000.
Right.
You know, and if, and I just spoke with DCEO today, and if we were to go through all that money, we could have the possibility to get more. So I would encourage all of you, if you have Facebook pages, please, please get the word out. I mean, I know we said we have 57 entries. I quite frankly thought it would be higher than that by now, and I may regret saying that, but I want to see as many businesses as we can helped in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. Dr. Yezel, what's the timeline for people from application to getting their check? What's your, and I'm not saying specifically, let's say someone gets the application in, it looks great, everything's there. What sort of general timeline is it to get money?
All right, we have the applications, or you can apply through December, or November the 30th. We give us a couple of weeks to look. We hope to announce December 14th. It could be a little earlier, but for sure by December 14th, and then it'll just be a process of us connecting with them. We'll have to have some verification of information, and I mean, we, hopefully I could get checks out before Christmas.
Okay, but it'll still be six to seven weeks before people actually see checks from this fund? Is that correct? Is that right? No, it's a month?
Not a month, yeah, a month or so, yeah.
Christmas is gonna sneak up on me. Okay, thank you. I know people are concerned with how quickly the money will be dispersed.
Right.
Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMenamin.
Just a point of information. I don't think the Alderman received a copy of this ordinance, nor possibly the next ordinance, we're considering on emergency passage, so just making that a point of information.
Is it on the screen? No.
I believe it would be on the screen if you're in the city council chambers. I'm not sure the Alderman on Zoom would have access to it.
Yep.
I believe it would have been circulated with the agenda.
Yeah, we have it.
With the normal package Friday. On these, on these particular items, 467 and, I believe, 468, they were filed on Friday for emergency passage and should have been distributed by the clerk's office with the, with the normal package.
Okay, that may be true. Oftentimes, we get paper copies at city council, so we just have a unique situation tonight, because we're also on Zoom, but everyone would have access to it through the email. We would have received Friday, is the answer, I guess. Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of the ordinance, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Filginsy. Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and no nays, Mayor.
And I'll vote yes. That makes it 10-0. Next item on the agenda is 2020-468, an ordinance amending Chapter 131 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by adding Section 131.15 pertaining to public health requirements for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion, place Agenda Number 2020-468 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved in second, any discussion?
Could you summarize this, and also, Darlena, could you advance the screen to show ordinance 468? Okay, the answer is we can't show it on the screen at the moment. Okay, thank you.
So I'll ask Corporation Counsel this, the mask ordinance for public facilities. It's dealing with inside of public facilities, but he'll give a recap.
You may recall that the, just briefly, the council had earlier passed an ordinance relating to mandatory mask requirements in retail establishments. What this does, and only under certain circumstances, where there's a public health emergency or need for that to be in place. What this amendment does is to expand that from just retail establishments, but public spaces, which would include areas in building structures, vehicles, enclosures not restricted to employees only, public space includes but not limited to service providers such as insurance companies, tax offices, title companies, financial institution, buses, taxis, shared ride vehicles, civic centers, theaters, sports, fitness centers, art studios, medical offices, facilities, religious houses of worship, schools, retail establishments, private clubs, reception and banquet halls, meeting rooms, and government offices. Public space does not include outdoor spaces, like parks and so on, private residences, private residential rooms, or private vehicles.
So any discussion or questions?
So does this mean, like, every city employee, let's say they're working in a private office with four walls and the door closed, do they still have to have a mask on?
Yes, any, any areas, this would include government offices, so any areas that would be considered public. Now, that does not include a private office where a single person, that they'd have to have their mask on all the time, but the public areas of all the public buildings, any area where the public could come into that would be deemed public spaces, this would apply to.
When you come in contact with others.
Yes, sir.
So you were, while you're in contact with others, is that the, I'm sorry, I did not read this ordinance. I don't think it was highlighted when we received it, so my apologies. I don't know if other Aldermen have had a chance to read the text of this ordinance that have an opinion about it.
Is there any questions or comments from the Zoom?
Mayor?
Yes, Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, when we say public areas, we're also talking about our council chambers, is that correct?
That's correct.
So anyone in council chambers would wear a mask at all times?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
And this extends to private offices, is that correct? Like, if you go into an insurance agent, you go into any kind of, whatever it be, your CPA?
Right, yeah.
While you're with others in that space, you have to wear a mask, is that correct?
That's correct. Alderwoman DeSensio.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to add, how we do it at my workplace is very simple, and we've been doing this since we returned to the office at the end of May, beginning of June, but common spaces such as elevators, staircases, break rooms, you know, if you have an office to yourself, you don't have to have your mask on, but if someone comes in that office, which isn't even recommended, you, everyone puts their mask back on. So, you know, we discourage in-person meetings, you know, phone meetings, Zoom meetings, WebEx meetings, anything we can to try to be as safe as possible. And I think that's what the intent of this ordinance is.
Correct.
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMenamin.
Is there a duration for this rule? How, what's the termination date, or when does this rule end?
Yes, Corporation Counsel.
This would, this is very specific and limited. It is part of the city code, but it specifically provides that only, that this would be in place only at times when there is a public health order or emergency declaration requiring masks to be in effect. So it is limited to a specific instance where it would be appropriate because of a public health order or an emergency declaration requiring the use of masks. And in this particular case, between the steps that the governor's office, CDC, and then governor's office has done, and then the mayor's authority for declaring an emergency requirement, would then trigger this requirement. When those are not in effect, then this would not be in place.
So are we giving, does this, if we pass this ordinance tonight, does it go in, does this new masking requirement in various, all public spaces, does it go into effect upon signing of the ordinance by the mayor, or does the mayor then have to take additional steps, and does it then continue, once the mayor does the additional step of saying, we're in an emergency, does this then continue until the mayor takes it off, takes off the emergency?
You may, effectively, yes, tomorrow. The, the emergency orders that the city code allows and under state law allows for the local emergencies last from council meeting to council meeting. So that's the same reason why the governor has to do a series of orders, you know, affirming them. So there will be another order tomorrow affirming the prior orders and incorporating this. However, at some point in the future, hopefully this all expires, meaning that it will no longer be in place automatically.
So an order has to be filed tomorrow with the clerk in order for this to go into effect?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, have you, has this been in the public sphere, this ordinance been discussed in the public? Has the Chamber of Commerce commented? Has, have groups that might be impacted by this had a chance to know about this and offer their comments?
Just through the, this process, you know, anytime I'm on the interview, I think, I think it's, I've spoke to it many times, so as far as surveying individuals, I have talked to Chris Hembrow, you know, they don't come out and endorse one way or the other, but I think everybody sees the importance of it, especially what we're going through today. Mayor? Yes, Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, how's this different than what the, what the governor has already done? I mean, what, why, why do we need this? I thought the governor had already put something in place.
Corporation Counsel.
The governors, the governor has not, has, does not have the authority to have a mandatory mask ordinance. What they have done is through the Public Health Department for employees, that they have a public health rule that was published. It's relatively limited in its scope to retail, certain retail establishments, primarily affecting employees. So this goes substantial, substantially beyond just a recommendation or an advisory, but actually expands that concept substantially. This is not in place currently via any state rule.
Yeah, what is, in reference to today's mitigation, mitigation, I'll just read it to you. For instance, Health and Fitness Centers, it says face coverings must be worn at all times, including while engaged in individual exercise, regardless of person or machine spacing. They have it in certain circumstances. What's not in place is the authorization for enforcement. And I talked to the governor's office last week, I believe it was, and he said we are the first city in the state to have a mask mandate ordinance. So this just broadens our requirement to have that in place.
Well, because last, the last time we voted on the, the other one, the, what, what my understanding was, we were putting it in to where the individual could get fined as well. And my understanding is that there has been some individuals cited for not, you know, for refusing to wear a mask. What I'm concerned is, you know, are we getting too, I don't know, are we, are we getting too strict?
This is, carries that out where you can. It's my understanding that the individual fines would be in place as well. Is that correct, Corporation Counsel?
Excuse me, there would still be that possibility, yes.
So the importance of it is with regards to, I think we're down to 16% positivity rate, and everybody's talked about what the most effective way, way is to drive that number down, and it's wearing the mask. And so, you know, we're, what we want to prevent is any more closures, any more restrictions. And so, you know, everybody asks for data. This is one surefire way to get data with putting this in place to see how the numbers go and driving that number down. There's also, you know, stress on hospital systems with the staffing as well. And so we should be doing whatever we can to make sure people mask up. And if they're not, then they'll be warned or potentially fined to gain compliance with regards to that. I don't know if there's any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The clerk will now call the roll. Maybe we got disconnected. So he can call the roll and let you know what that is, or ask if there's any other questions? Okay, we'll wait a few minutes. Hopefully get it resolved. There's a technical difficulty with regards to the individuals on Zoom. They can't hear us. It's my understanding that the viewing audience can see us and hear us here in the chamber, but not on Zoom. So that's what we're trying to correct. So hopefully it only takes a few minutes.
I'll be honest, while we're waiting, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I'll be honest, I, I think I want to support appropriate steps to address the just rampant spread in central Illinois and in Springfield, but I feel uncomfortable voting on something that I haven't seen. And I can't pull it up on the screen right now. And I've asked Tim Griffin to look to see if it was in the attachments, just to see if, if it was there, probably was there. And, you know, my fault for not looking for it when we got the email on Friday.
Can you hand him the ordinance? Do you have it? Yes. I don't know if that was satisfactory or not, but. Yeah, we apologize for that.
There we go, yeah.
Can you hear us now?
Mayor, are you back?
I hope so.
They're muted.
Can you hear us?
Yep, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, great. So I don't know.
You hit the wrong button.
I just was stating, I think we heard Alderman Hanauer and his concern about individuals. And I was just clarifying that the importance of this ordinance is to assure compliance as much as possible. You know, we just went through another tier of mitigations through the governor's office. Nobody wants to see additional businesses shut down. Everybody needs to do what they can to help protect themselves and others. And the surefire way of doing that is wearing your mask. And so this, you know, ordinance is a broadening of what we passed previously, and just to make sure that everybody has that understanding and we gain compliance across the board and hopefully bring down the number, which right now, I think the last time I checked was 16% positivity rate. And when we talk about data, this can help give us data to show the impact that we've had when this has been put in place, and then hopefully take the stress also off the hospitalizations and the staff and the healthcare industry. I don't know if there's any other questions or discussion?
I just had a, I just had a comment. I think that, is there any way possible that we could do some type of an educational campaign to advise the appropriate way to wear a face covering or a mask? I mean, I, it really doesn't do any good to mandate the wearing of the mask if people are not going to wear it properly. I mean, I think all of us have seen people with masks in, in various ways of affixed to the face. And, I mean, you see them down here, down here, every, every which way. So, I mean, last time I was at, at church, someone was close to me and they had it like down here, and I just kind of moved away. But I just think that it, it would be in our best interest if we could do some type of an educational campaign.
Yeah, we've had this card that we've been passing out when they visit stores. The police officers or businesses can run them off and hand them out as a way to de-escalate a situation especially, but it shows the proper way to wear it and what's the improper way. And then, of course, if fire department or police or Public Works, when they're in those businesses, they can re-educate them using that, but you never can state it enough. And we still have the occasion where individuals are just defiant. They don't want to wear a mask. We had a situation this, this week. I think it was at a gas station where someone, you know, was unruly to a clerk that was asking them to put on the mask. So that's still in effect as well.
Can we do a, you know, put something out on, you know, our social media platforms or some, I mean, I, I know that we're not going to reach everybody, but I just think that it would, it would be great if we could somehow just reinforce it and put it out there in the, in the public arena.
Sure. Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Alderman McMenamin.
Thank you, Corporation Counsel Zirkel, for passing over a copy of the ordinance. Just two points. This ordinance requires owners of service offices or to post a notice at their entrance that the fast, the mask requirement is, is in place. And anyone who fails to comply is asked to either put on a mask or to leave the premises. The ordinance does also provide for a fine. That would be for, I guess, a belligerent type of non-compliant person who, as opposed to someone who forgets to put on their mask or who momentarily takes off the mask to blow their nose or whatever. So it has a $50 fine, and then for the owners of the establishments, it's a $250 fine for the first violation and a $500 for each subsequent violation.
Correct.
For the record.
Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor of the ordinance vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Mayor Linek Felder.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor?
Thank you. Cheryl will entertain a motion to suspend with rules on, place on first reading Agenda Number 2020-475, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for purchase and sale of real estate with Brandy Tully and Ronald Scott Tully in an amount not to exceed $102,000 in closing costs and the amount of $1,500, and for a total amount not to exceed $103,500 for the property located at 2331 South Sixth Street.
So moved.
Okay.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those say nay, motion carries. Cheryl will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading Agenda Number 2020-476, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in the amount of $8,000 for personal property located at 2331 South Sixth Street.
So moved.
Aye.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Cheryl will entertain a motion to play, to suspend with the rules in place on first reading Agenda Number 2020-477, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for purchase and sale of real estate with Neil A. Davis in the amount not to exceed $88,000, and closing costs in the amount of $1,500, and for a total amount not to exceed $89,500 for the property located at 2408 South Fifth Street.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Cheryl will entertain a motion to suspend with the rules in place on first reading Agenda Number 2020-478, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in the amount of $5,000 for personal property located at 2408 South Fifth Street.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Those say nay, motion carries. Cheryl will entertain a motion to suspend with the rules in place on first reading Agenda Number 2020-479, an ordinance proposing a COVID-relief CWLP Small Business Assistance Program using the Environmental and Regulatory Initiatives and Rebate Fund, ERIRF, and a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $500,000 for the City of Springfield Office of Public Utilities.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay, motion carries. Is there any unfinished business coming for the council?
Wait, Mayor?
Yes.
Can you please add me as a sponsor to all of those other ordinances?
For the rail?
Please.
Yes.
And put an exclamation point behind your name. Five, actually six, exclamation points. I'm almost done with me, everybody.
Any other unfinished business?
I have two things.
Yeah, Alderman Turner and Alderman Hanauer after that.
Okay, the first thing is, there, there were a couple of emails that were going around about a, the installation of a micro pantry at the library. I know the last email I saw was a confirmation from Public Works and zoning that it was, it's not a problem, not an issue. So I was just curious as to where we were with that. And the weather is getting bad, and if we could get it, if we can give Black Lives Matter permission to install as quickly as possible, that would be great. Or if there's another hurdle that, you know, we need to take care of, then, you know, if you could let us know, that would be great too.
Yeah, I think Nate was going to send them the information that's needed. I think it's a sidewalk permit. And was there one other item, or was that it?
It's, there's, there's a process that Public Works approves the installation of the, any things on sidewalks or on public property. It's a very simple form. It's the same one that's used when streets are closed or different things are assembled. So I think Nate was going to actually reach out and make sure that they had the information that was needed. He did not think it would, he did not think it would be any problem.
Okay, that's, oh, you just made my night. Okay, and then, then the other thing that is more a point of clarification, so I just, just want to take a few minutes to add some clarity to a situation that unfortunately has taken on an unbelievable life of its own, on Facebook and other, so several months ago, there was an ordinance related to rail relocation and the purchase of property. And this property had been the subject of city legal action, so, and it was legal action that I have been significantly involved with. So I asked that the ordinance be held just until I could confirm that all debts related to the legal action have been satisfied. So I had no knowledge or was I concerned about any other debt. I was only interested in that related to the legal action and this particular parcel. So without my knowledge or consent, the ordinance was pulled and ready for final action. And during the discussion, I will admit, I did make an off-the-cuff comment that I learned was incorrect because Mr. Turner has had indeed satisfied the debt. So I apologize for the comment. However, I think that if there is a situation where alders are significantly involved with an ordinance that's being held, they should be afforded some courtesies before it's pulled out, or at least had the opportunity for, for discussion. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Any other, Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was, I was approached by some bar owners. We had mentioned about prorating some, some of the liquor license fees for some of the bar and restaurants. I didn't know if you were planning on doing that before the end of the year. I think that they have, they have to pay their license. I'm not sure when that, that all comes up. But I think that's something we need to get, you know, take a good, hard look at and to try to help them out. A lot of them are shut down now. I know with the governor's orders today, they, the game, gaming establishments are also shut down. So it's affecting everyone. So I wanted to bring that up. And then the other thing I'm concerned about is, you know, we, we're going out and we're, we're going after the restaurants as, as we should, that, you know, that are, that are not abiding by our guidelines. My concern is on Black Friday, you're going to have hordes of people floating into these big box stores that have been, have gotten a pass from, for this whole thing. And they're not going to follow, what are we going to do to make them follow the rules for, for occupants? are we going to do to make them follow the rules for, for occupancy, and granted, everybody's weren't supposed to be wearing a mask, but I just think that it's something that we need to, to get, get ahead of, because it's not fair we're targeting one industry and not the other, so I just think that we need to, to look at that, especially with the amount of people that usually go out, and the stores are, are literally jam-packed, so that, we need to address that fairly quickly, so, that's my two thanks, thank you.
With regards to the liquor license, they come up in January, so we will include that on the order tomorrow, is my understanding, and look to provide, I think we're going to do a year, next year, credit with regards to the liquor license, with regards to the big box stores, I believe they're held to 25% capacity, and so we will have to revisit that, I know, I think there is one in particular that was cited recently, but that was more on the mass side of things, but I think we will revisit that and remind them of the parameters that they need to follow. Any other unfinished business?
Just the mayor.
Yes, Alderman Gregory?
Just a few things, sir, I just, I, I had, I rode by 10th City yesterday, or the former 10th City, and, and, you know, I, I know we have made some strides in cleaning that up, and, you know, I hope that's going to be finished soon, you know, some of that stuff has been blowing over into Madison Park Place, I, I was concerned yesterday when I rode down 11th Street, and I, I seen their staff out, you know, having to get some cheers up, some things that blew over from the strong winds onto their property, you know, they didn't call me and complain or anything, they just got their staff out there and picked it up, and I'm appreciative of them, and, you know, I just, you know, I seen on the news and stuff that, that we have been getting it cleaned up, and I, I did actually ride by there again today, and there was a guy out there cleaning up by himself at that, you know, I think that was a little bit of stuff, but, you know, he was doing a great job, and it looks a whole lot better than what it did.
Yeah, I think that's all supposed to be cleaned up by Friday.
So I appreciate whoever did that, our police department, and as well as Public Works, for the hard, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
For the hard work that they have done in, in some areas, I think our police department, our Public Works team, or that they did in the area of our community that was having significant problems, I appreciate them for that, one question I did want to ask, Chief, have you had any updates on the location that we're doing, that we're trying to get some improvement on, as far as with our nuisance abatement recommendations or, or whatever?
Is that geared towards Chief Winslow?
Chief, if he's on the line. I can, it's, it's fine.
If he's there, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, as far as the location on Cook Street, that one has moved forward, as far as, the other one, the paperwork's still being worked on to see if we have enough to go forward on it.
Okay, all right, all right, I appreciate you, sir, thank you, and my last, my last thing, Mr. Mayor, we, if, if, if we remember, we had a gentleman in Bana Cantaco who came up here a few weeks ago about some, some concerns in a property that he was renting, some significant problems at that, our Public Works crew did a great job, they've been on, our inspector's done a great job, but come to surprise, and he, you know, he was going to come today, but he's, he's actually having a new baby tonight, but his, his house caught on fire, you know, and he lost everything, and it looks like, you know, from, from some of the violations that, that was on this house, so I say that to say that, that, you know, that's, that's why we, you know, I've been harping on, on, on our housing situations and the inspections of these, of the inside of some of these older ones, you know, young man has, has not only his life, but a, a young baby's life, and thank God that they wasn't there, and thank God that they are alive, but they have lost, lost pretty much everything in one of the hardest economic times that we've seen, you know, since, in my life, definitely, you know, so I definitely want to get with Corporation Council, I, I, you know, we have to really circle our heads around how we want to improve existing houses that, that have not been taken care of, that, that have some, you know, medical issues, backed-up sewage, I mean, just situations that nobody should have to live in and pay money for, to live, so, so, so I definitely want to, you know, sit down with you, Mr. Zerco, and, and really bounce some ideas off your head, to try to, to try to help, you know, our housing stock be the best that it can be, especially on the east side of town, you know, where we have a majority of rental properties, and, you know, most of our landlords do a great job, you know, I, I stay in a rental home, he does a great job taking care of our properties, and now I've stayed in, in his homes for some time, so it's rare, but, but, but I caution, you know, people who, I, I know we're in some tough financial times, I know some people, you know, have some tenants that are not paying rent, but those who are, and, and, you know, in event, we should never have houses that where, you know, we, we flag somebody and, you know, they, they can't get smoke detectors in the house, or simple things that take no time, you know, I'm disappointed in that, and, and, you know, I hope, Wine has done a great job of getting connected with services, but I did want to just bring that to our city council's attention, that, that, you know, we, we have to put our minds around this and, and, and see what we can do, so I appreciate it.
Sounds good. Any other unfinished business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Alderman McMinim.
A follow-up to Alderwoman DeCenso's very satisfied comment last week regarding foremost liquors on South Grand about to be demolished, the, this Public Works crews were finishing up the demolition today at 1:00 PM, and it just looks vastly better, and it's a main route into our city, and so congratulations to our Public Works demolition crew for getting that done, and for all who helped assist it and making it happen, legal staff and everyone that got that done, and Alderwoman DeCenso, you won't be getting any calls on that anymore.
Very good, just a reminder, everybody should get their flu shot if they have not done so.
Mayor, sorry, I had one quick question.
Sure.
Thank you, and this is for Corporation Council, we haven't talked about this for a while, but the Washington Street Department, since we're discussing problem properties, I would like an update on the status of those apartments, I continue to get complaints on a regular basis that the fencing around that building is cut, and people are getting into, onto the property, it's, it seems like five minutes after it's fixed, there, there's a hole again, so if you could, I would like to, like an update on that, where it is in the administrative court process, certainly that owner has had enough time to address the situation, we need to, I think, be a little more proactive on behalf of that neighborhood.
I will, I will put together a report for you.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other, new business coming before the council? We do have, tomorrow, Facebook Live will be Director Gail O'Neill from Sangamon County Public Health, and Dr. Sun Derration, who's on the, one of the advisors associated with the public health pandemic, have the incident command team, and then more likely Chief Reine if his schedule allows. We do have one, is there any other comments by the council? We have someone, John Keating, that signed up to speak, he's in, on Zoom.
All right, am I here, can everybody hear me?
Yep, go ahead, if you'd say your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
John Keating, I live off of Walnut and Lawrence here in Springfield, just southwest of downtown, in Andrews Ward, and it's, I spoke to you about it yesterday, Mayor, I've spoken to a number, a number of the council members, Andrew Proctor, Mr. DeCenso, Sean Gregory, and we're in the middle of a pandemic, and Ameren has shut off in the last month and a half, over 1,100 households in Springfield, one in 50 houses in Springfield have had their gas shut off by Ameren in the last month and a half, and we're going into the winter, and it's already cold, I learned today that Universal Utility has been shutting off water to folks in Springfield, and we need to be able to do something, it's a third-party broker, I believe they sell to mobile home facilities through C, through CWLP, but we're shutting off water in the midst of a pandemic, we're shutting off gas as we're going into winter, and it's something that really needs addressed, the mayor has the power through the emergency declarations that have been put forth to prevent public utilities, which Ameren has considered, from shutting off customers for seven days, and the city council, like they have with the mask ordinances and other portions of the declaration of emergency, the ability to extend that, and the residents of Springfield are asking that be done, I mean, 1,100 households equates to about 2,500 people, and that was at the end of October, and Ameren has continued to shut people off, so we're probably over 4,000 residents of Springfield that have been affected by this, so that's something that I think really needs pertinent attention, because the longer we go without action on this, then the more folks get shut off, and something that I hadn't anticipated speaking on, but Alderman Gregory just brought up with the housing situation, during my campaign for the State House, one of the ideas for that that I had brought up, we have been criminalizing the drug trade and seizing property from people convicted of drug crimes for decades, we should criminalize profiting continuously, habitually, off of substandard housing and housing with massive code violations like the one that we saw that took the home of a family just yesterday, and give ourselves the ability to seize these properties and give the tenants the option of purchasing them, rather than having landlords that have dozens of properties that they continuously don't do things with, so first and foremost, definitely, we need to get a utility shut-off moratorium going, we have an organization of over, a coalition of over 50 organizations that are working statewide on this, and as Springfield has been a leader with the mask mandate, we should be a leader as the capital city with the utility shut-off moratorium as well, thank you guys very much for addressing me, and if anybody has any questions to that, my email is keatingforchange@gmail, and I would love to speak to anybody on, with more information on that, on that issue.
If you could, let us know where that mobile home park, not, you can just send it to us, to feedback@springfield aisle.us, and we'll take a look at that.
I'm waiting on that information from the resident, I'll definitely forward that as soon as I get it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Make a motion for adjournment.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Folks, say nay. We're adjourned, have a good night.
All right, now.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi Douglas, how's it going?